Okay. It is close to seven o'clock. It is seven o'clock. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And this is the regular city council meeting for City of Minutrista, September 6. My first order of business is a reminder that if you have cell phones with you, please put them on airplane mode or turn them on silent so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, I'd like to ask you to join me in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, new flag of the United States of America. In the Republic of America, with the President and with the President of Justice Charles.
So thank you all for being here this evening. And welcome, and welcome to those that are watching later on in YouTube. I'm going to start out with a few little presentation, presentation of our staff and council. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left, we have council members Pam Mortenson, John Chumperlin, Ann McGregor, Kathleen Refkin. And on the end, we have our city attorney, city engineer Allison Faussky with WSB. And in the front row here, we have Adam Gabois. He's also our assistant city engineer. And then also this evening, joining us is Chris Bunders. He is going to be the, what's your title?
Project engineer.
Project engineer for the North Arm project. So, and then to my right, we have a number of staff members absent this evening. And those that are present are Ally Paul Fu. She is our director of administration. Gary Peters is our super, our public works director. We changed your title, so now I have to remember the new one. And then we have David Abel, who is our community development director. Ron Beatty is our city attorney with Kennedy and Graven. And then on the end, we have Paul Falls, who is our police chief. So with that, we're going to move to approve the agenda. Are there any changes or additions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we're going to have a special presentation. We have a gentleman with us this evening with Mindot. And he's going to give us a presentation on the Highway 7 safety presentation. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. My name is Derek Liller. I'm with the Minnesota Department of Transportation. I'm the state traffic safety engineer and I have a project to enter for this road safety audit. I'll say I'm a little flustered because Andrew Litoye with Westside Area was supposed to be here today, and I don't know where he is. So I'm just going to kind of pump it, or I'm just going to kind of cover this to the best of my ability. So if I don't have answers to all the questions, I apologize, but we'll certainly get answers soon if we have any more. So like I said, we did a road safety audit out here on Highway 7. Covered a long stretch of road, 32 miles. The mayor did tell me I had 15 minutes, so I'm going to try to go as fast as I can.
I'll give, I'll give you an extra minute because Andrew isn't here.
That's right. All right, next slide. So the reason for the study, you guys might remember last summer, there was a fatality on Highway 7 if you repeat driving in Shorewood there. If I remember correctly, it was a motorcycle that pulled out and got hit. Fairly high rate of speed, was killed. We saw a pretty big outcry from the community, both Shorewood, Minutrista, Excelsior, kind of the whole corridor along 7 here, and have a pretty big outcry. Say, hey, Mindot, we want you to do something, we need you to do something. And our commissioners set forth and said, the best thing we can do right now on short notice is a road safety audit. And that's where I kind of brought into this. But we got a lot of input from the people along the corridor before we even started the study. We actually reached out to all the city engineers and asked, you know, can you help us write our scope of work for our consultant to make sure we're getting all your concerns addressed? Next slide. So what is a road safety audit? A road safety audit really is this idea of bringing in an independent team of experts to kind of review the crash history of the corridor, what's been talked about before, prior plans and recommendations, and then ultimately go out there and review the existing conditions. We actually typically before COVID, we'd get in a van and we'd drive up and down the corridor. With, I think about that time Omicron was really big, so we said, let's just do this virtually. So we actually all drove the corridor separately. We took a lot of pictures, then we met as a team, virtually, and kind of went over the whole pair of corridor, talked about a lot of different things. Next slide. But really, the other idea is to really identify a lot of different things based on education, enforcement, engineering, and then this emergency medical trauma services. You might have heard of that, the four E's of traffic safety. So really, this is what we can do to try to improve the roadway out there and Highway 7 as well. So really, the goal is to identify things that we call short-term, medium-term, and long-term strategies. Next slide. So some background, next slide. Here's kind of the corridor from where we went to. We all went, went all the way up Hollywood Township, and then we took the whole corridor all the way to St. Louis Park where it ends and becomes Lake Street. But really, you know, you guys are probably most interested in this middle segment, which is, you know, where you guys are. So I'm going to try to focus the presentation on there. Next slide. Here's some existing volumes and traffic speeds out here and the speed limits. The posted speed limits don't always necessarily coincide with the speed people are driving, but really, I won't get too much detail there. But next slide. We looked at a lot of the existing plans already out here. You know, there's been a lot of good work done here, both by Kendrick County, Mindot's prior plans, and just what is the future, what does this area want to look like? And how do we build the infrastructure to accommodate that? So we looked into these plans, we reviewed them, tried to figure out how can we incorporate a lot of the good things that were already done here and incorporate them into the road safety audit as well. Next slide. We did, we did a public engagement thing. We tried to really reach out to the community and get, you know, as many responses as we could. We really wanted to know what people were thinking about Highway 7. We had this map up for about a month, and we actually sent out boards to libraries and a few community centers that told us, you know, tell us what you think. Tell us what you see as issues, what do you see as opportunities, or what do you see as concerns? And really, this area from Minutrista to Mindot really came in big. You guys, we had a thousand comments overall. Almost 600 of them came from this area itself. So I mean, that was really the bulk of the comments. Out by Hollywood and out towards St. Louis Park, we saw, you know, 100 to 200 comments. This area was about 600. So we had a really good response. And we kind of saw some pretty good general themes out there. A lot of people concerned about intersections. People were concerned about, you know, they either said they want to roundabouts or they want to run traffic signals. And usually, those two were kind of mutually exclusive of each other. It was kind of one or the other. The other big thing, too, is a lot of people were concerned about pedestrian access. They wanted to be able to use Highway 7 or cross Highway 7 safely. And then there's some concerns about night kind of visibility. People really felt protecting the corridor at night felt particularly dangerous. And then just that traffic light visibility, too. Sometimes people couldn't see the lights, or it was too hard to see them too far off. So those are some general responses. We saw a lot of things, a lot of, a lot of different comments around the habits, but those are kind of the themes we saw. Next slide. So here's some of the transient, next slide. Next slide, just to keep things moving. So here's a number of crashes that occurred from 2016 to 2020 along the whole corridor. This is along the whole 32 miles. You can see a kind of bounce between around that 300 to 400 mark from 2016 to 2019. 2020, we saw a big dive, but that was also coincidental with COVID. And we saw that statewide as well. We saw about 40 to 50% of crashes, severe danger. I'll just keep going. But that's kind of what we saw for general crashes, next slide. And then this is the types of crashes we saw out there, really from, really the big ones was people rearing each other, front to rear. And really, that didn't surprise me, if this is a signalized corridor. Typically, when we see traffic signals, we see a rearing crash. People just, as people slow down, you know, somebody thinks someone else is going to go or not go, and that creates issues. But really, that drove a lot of the total crashes out there. Next slide. This is the fatal and serious injury crashes along the whole corridor. You can see they're pretty evenly distributed across the whole corridor. There was no one particular stretch of corridor that really popped up from that perspective. But really, the corridor as a whole, we just said, you know, there probably just needs to be some general work done across the whole corridor. Next step, or next slide. So the two big things Mindot really looks at when we're looking at crash histories, it's fatal and serious injury crashes, those are what we call our safety performance measures. Those are the numbers we really kind of focus on, and those are the numbers we really want to drive down. And really, when we looked at this corridor, one of the big things we saw were crashes related to people running red lights. That really drove a lot of the fatal and serious injury crashes. And so with that, we kind of, knowing that going into the corridor study, we kind of thought about all the projects we looked at, all the spots we looked at. We kind of looked at through that lens, that really, people running red lights. And then this next one, the people kind of feeling to go right away or using intersections improperly really are driving the bulk of those severe crashes. So that's kind of how we looked at the corridor as we went into it. Next slide. So some of the recommended improvements. The big ones, so these are kind of some corridor-wide ones that we focused on. And kind of one of the biggest ones we really focused on at, at this red light running thing is there's a, there's a device up there called this blue light, and this is important for this reason. Is one of the best ways to deter red light running is with enforcement. And one of the harder things with enforcement, running red lights, is typically you need two officers to do it. And the reason why is that is because officers don't like to follow people through a red light. Right, chief? Yeah, right? I mean, who wants officers to be through a red light, right? You're going to get hit. So usually typically, the strategy is you put one officer upstream of the signal and you put one downstream. And then that way, when someone runs that red light, the one upstream can say, hey, I saw the blue Volvo, red, red light. To the officer downstream, and the officer downstream goes out and gets them. Problem is, a lot of agencies don't have two officers that commit to traffic control, especially traffic light enforcement. And if they do, they usually don't want to be, you know, doing it at one stoplight. What this allows us to do is to put a blue light on after that signal. And when that signal turns red, the blue light turns on. And that tells the officer downstream that the light is red, and then they can see who's running the red light and pull them over. Therefore, you only need one officer to do red light running enforcement. So that was a really big strategy. That was one we recommended across the whole corridor. Anytime we see traffic signals, this might be a good thing to do. The thing is, the blue light really doesn't do anything by itself. It's just a blue light. You really do need enforcement, and we need a commitment from enforcement to say, yeah, we will go out there and monitor this, and we will go and write tickets to make sure you don't stop running red lights. The other thing, too, is just this increased signal conspicuity. Put this yellow border around the signal. You might see that out at St. Boniface, we did it. But do that along the signals. Increased enforcement. Now, it's easy for me to say increased enforcement because I don't control enforcement at all, but I know enforcement's already scrapped as it is. It's a big ask, but that's one thing that we did say is, you know, anytime we need more enforcement on the corridor, that's a positive thing. But then the last one is this idea of creating Highway 7 corridor coalition. Now, that's not something Mindot itself can lead, but somebody along the corridor can start that and start to lead that. And Mindot can come to the table with data and resources and people to help provide data for that and direction. But really, my experience has been when we have these corridor coalitions, they are really good at helping to secure funding, helping to some resources, and then ultimately give the corridor built to the vision that we all see. So that's a big one. We've seen a lot of successes around the Twin Cities across the state when these corridor coalitions get made. Next slide. Just some of the other recommended improvements. How am I doing for time?
You're doing great. You're doing great.
Okay. All right, next one. So we kind of, we kind of broke it up into these three segments that we got, like I said. We got a lot of recommendations, it's a 68 report, 68-page report. And we covered a lot of ground, and, but I'll just hit some of the high points, so go to the next one. You know, we got some of these short-term ones. One of them up here, I think, is the Marywood Avenue, where you see those big trees on the corner of the intersection. So one of the short-term improvements we have, and I think Andrew's even looking into this, is can we start cutting back some of those trees to open up those sidelines? So when you pull up to that intersection, you can see, you know, half mile down the road, you have a half mile of the road this way. Ultimately, that helps drivers make a better decision of when to go. And those are things that are fairly easy to do. Some of the other ones we have, next one. Keep going. Keep going. All right. So, so one of the, one of the things we talked about, and this is in St. Boniface, is, St. Boniface, if you drive in, it certainly is a more urbanized area. But the thing is, the road feels like a rural highway. So one of the recommendations we made for the, for the long-term of highways, St. Boniface Highway 7, is really to make this kind of feel like an urban corridor. And you do that by putting things like sidewalks, trees, raised, raised medians, raised flat concrete medians, curving gutter, really make it feel like it's an urban section, like it's a city street, a slowdown. And if you drive 92, you're heading north off of 7 there, it feels like a city street. And that's what we kind of envisioned for Highway 7 in that section, is make it feel like a city street. That way, people drive like the city street. They don't want to drive like a rural highway. So then, that's a, that's a pretty big one. That's a long-term one. That's one that's going to take a major reconstruction of the street, which means we've got to go all the way down the subgrade, we've got to build the road back up. Not a cheap thing, not an easy thing, but certainly a thing that's worthwhile to do in the long run. Next slide. Next slide, next slide, keep going, keep going. All right. So this, this was the corridor part that really triggered a lot of the audit. This was the part of the corridor where we got a lot of comments. And this was the spot, too, where I'd say from a, from a professional engineering perspective, this is one of the most challenging corridors I've looked at, especially in this area right here, because it's like, what do you do? You know, we talked about the idea of a four lane expansion, but going through here, the topography and the lakes ain't going to happen. It's just, it's just too tight of a corridor. And we talked about, you know, can you signalize some of these intersections? Can you put roundabouts at some of these intersections? And looking at each of these smaller streets, none of them on their own really generate enough traffic that weren't kind of an investment. But the corridor as a whole, it's just, what do you do? So what we kind of came up with was this idea of, let's build a roundabout corridor. And I'm not going to tell you where to put the roundabouts yet, because I don't know where the best spot to put the roundabouts are yet. But we figured that might be a really good spot to engage with the community and say, hey, where do we think the roundabouts could go? And once we figure out where the roundabouts could go, what we would do is we'd build a divided two-lane roadway with a raised center median, just a flat median that you can walk across. And once again, get back to that urbanized sector, the segment that we talked about, the St. Boniface. And that would do a couple of things. Number one, most of these driveways would then become, or I won't even say driveways, access points. A lot of these access points would become right in, right out. So everybody would have to turn right, go down to the roundabout, make a U-turn, and come back. And statistically, that's one of the safest maneuvers we can make. And then two, what that would do, it helps, it helps slow down traffic. It would give pedestrians probably better opportunities to cross, both in the mid-blocks and at those roundabouts. And then ultimately, too, it would help lower those speeds up there. So we'd accomplish a lot of things at the same time. And all these people who are along Highway 7, who probably have such a hard time getting out of their development, would find it a lot easier, because it's easier to make a right, but not make a U-turn and come back than trying to make a left or trying to cross Highway 7. So this would accomplish a lot of things all at the same time. This, again, would be a big investment, and this would take a lot of community engagement. And we'd really need to talk to the communities and say, hey, where do we think these roundabouts would fit best? And where do we want to locate these to work for this corridor? Yeah, next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. All right.
Wow, you're really going fast.
Yeah. I'm trying to keep my 16 minutes. Next up, I'll invite Andrew up here. Come on up, Andrew. Andrew can talk about next up. So this is Andrew, you guys have probably met Andrew before, but go ahead.
Yeah, council members, again, my apologies. First day of school, I've been running late about 15 minutes the whole day. My apologies again. So I think a lot of it has been discussed by Derek. My role at Mindot Metro, I'm an area engineer, so Highway 7 is a corridor that I represent, being the first point of contact to the public and the department. That is my role. So Derek led the technical analysis for, for the, for the safety audit. Now, I was leading the public engagement piece. So for next step, and there are only two slides for next step, really, is that we want to continue engaging elected officials. Derek did mention Highway 7 coalition. Good, a very good opportunity for elected officials, for the public to be involved in determining what the corridor should be like. And also lobbying for funds, both state and federal, federal grants, to make improvements in the corridor. So that is why we are in front of you today. But the first few slides, Derek did mention that part of this purpose as well is identify the, what we call the law-hungry food, things that can't be done now. The couple of locations along Highway 7 that we are now engaging our maintenance group to do brush clearing, tree clearing, to help with clearance setup. So everything that we can do. Then, again, reaching out to, to, to the law enforcement to engage them in like, what can they do to increase enforcement so that we hopefully can get some science on how our railways are being used? Next slide. So this is, again, one of the meetings that we are holding with elected officials, with stakeholders. We're sharing the results or the recommendations of the study with the general public. It has been posted on our website. There was a website that was created. It's still up there, so people are forced to go and see what recommendations we come up with. And then, of course, continuing lobbying for additional funding and prioritization for the recommendations that are being offered. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Open for questions then, or? Okay. Council, questions? I just have a couple. All right. So you were talking about rear-end crashes and so on. Do roundabouts, are they better to prevent rear ends then?
Yeah. And it, oh, yeah. So it all kind of depends on the roundabouts and some of the traffic conditions in general. But overall, I would say if you had a vet, a roundabout would typically have far fewer crashes than a signal will. And even including roundabout, or roundabouts to signals, those rear-end crashes would typically go down, too. So in general, a roundabout will probably perform better with crashes than a signal will.
And then the other, you were talking about people running red lights. And I know that on some of the major highways, they have these signals that flash. So they give the driver that's coming down the road a, a forewarning that the light is going to be changing. Is that something you've looked at for this corridor?
I believe you're talking about the advanced warning systems, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we've, those have been reviewed and the crash performance has been done. And surprising to most people, they actually don't reduce crashes as much as people think.
But what about running red lights?
You would think that, yeah, right? Like giving people more information would create a better driver, right? But typically, what they found is that when they do those, typically, you'll kind of shift your crashes. You'll get fewer right angles, but then you'll increase your right, your rear ends, because when people see, when they see that lights are flashing, they gas it, right? They floor it, which can create other issues, too. So, and sometimes in the right applications, they work, and sometimes in the wrong applications, they'll make them worse. So it's kind of a trade-off, and sometimes they're really haven't quite figured out why sometimes they work better in some situations versus others.
Okay.
The St. Bonnie intersection with the stoplight, we talked about that. So is that already like on the books to be looked at and fixed? Or is that just a proposal that you're thinking about? Or does that mean, do you need the community committee to get behind that? Like how, how does that intersection in particular work?
Yeah, I think everything that we probably discussed today is probably still just, you know, a recommendation and a starting point. Not, I don't believe anything's been programmed, and I don't think anything's been planning of being programmed immediately. But yeah, that's everything that's in this road safety audit, is, you know, things that, as projects come forward or funding comes identified, those things might be able to get done.
You know, and that kind of begs another question. You were talking about a coalition. What other communities have created coalitions, and how have they gotten started? And, and how does that work?
Well, I can speak to at least seats that I'm aware of. On this side, there is a Highway 55 coalition. There is a Highway 94 coalition. There is the Highway 12 coalition. And really, what it took was elected officials that, that felt there was a desire and a need to represent a lobby for, for projects to come on their corridors. They reached out to adjacent cities and coalition was started.
Okay, great. Okay, good to know. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Really appreciate it, and lots of good information. I'm assuming we can have this, I mean, the PowerPoint can be sent out to the council then? That would be great. Great, thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. All right. Next, we'll move on to persons to be heard, and we have two people signed up. And so first of all, you have three minutes, and we may not take action. Mr. Knott, you're first.
Good evening. I'm Tom Knott. I live at 1250 Morningview Drive. And I just wanted to make a few points here on this road construction project. And I don't believe the council is being well-served because of the number of major errors that are still exist in the data that you've been presenting. I believe it would be completely irresponsible to make a $5 million decision on such an inaccurate report. If you go to the motion table, I think you should table Resolution 144 and 145 this evening and ask for accurate corrections on the following errors. Number one, the WSB engineering feasibility report should be completely published within the city council official packet. That link could go away tomorrow, and we'd have no official record. Please insist that the entire feasibility report be published in full with the city council packets before approving anything. The city paid for the report, and it should be the property of the city, and it should be properly published. Number two, starting on page 80 of the feasibility report, only one test boring shows any water at the, and that depth is at eight feet down. This is indicative that 93% of the soil borings show absolutely no problem with water potentially corroding the ductile pipe, which means the hot soil claim is only present in 7% of the area. Language in the report suggests a huge problem, but the details of the boring test do not suggest a huge problem, only isolated area of poor soil. Number three, starting on page 105, is a huge glaring error that shows option two should only cost $994,000 instead of the $3.2 million amount listed. This is terribly misleading to your council members. And if you look for it, it was on page, this is the page of the AE2S report that has it. And I sent you a red light copy of that, so hopefully you saw that. But that has not been corrected. It's still that way in the packet that you have. I attended a neighborhood meeting here, and the comment cards were never mentioned to fill them out. There was only one filled out by Mr. Hope. I was here, I didn't hear anybody say that we should fill those out. And then the council also received from a report from Dave Goulet, and we had like a survey of people, and the vast majority of everybody we talked to, as a matter of fact, all signed a statement that they wanted reclamation, not reconstruction. And I think this should be included in the comments as well. And then the last thing I want to mention is I did speak with Richard Wagner, and he's with AE2S, nice engineer. And it was presented that AE2S did an analysis of the conditions here, and they're also on board and agree that we need to replace our water main. And in talking to Richard Wagner, that's not the case. Richard's firm was only asked to summarize the information that was given to them by the city, is what he told me. And he actually did not even receive the soil report from WSB. So as an engineer, if you don't get all the good information, you can't make a good decision and a good recommendation. And I think by having AE2S give that recommendation or that, it was implied that they were recommending that this go through with the water main, and that's not what they were doing. They were just summarizing, meaningful that they were given. And I think that the city kind of presented it, like maybe more thought went into this than really did, and that's not good. I know they presented the experts with more experience than they have. When I say they have 42 years of experience, I do, I was registered in 1980. The engineers that we have here, Allison, they said, you have 23. You've been registered 19. And Aladdin, they said 10. You've been registered 5. The engineer from AE2S was registered for nine years, not 13. So I think they're making it look like this is really a for sure deal. Please go through this study. I think we're being misled a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is for the Woodland Cove Platte. But I, we're going to, you're on the agenda. Did you need to say anything?
No, I did not have a sign of you, so I did not.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. That concludes our persons to be heard. So we will move on to our consent agenda items. So I have a long list here, so bear with me. First is approve city council regular meeting minutes from August 15, 2022. B is approve our neighborhood meeting minutes from August 16, 2022. C is approve our neighborhood meeting minutes from August 17, 2022. D is approve claims. Did you want to remove claims?
I did.
Okay, we'll remove claims. I forgot to ask, any other ones that you want to remove? Okay. Then E is accept the water rate utility study report. F is approve a three-year auditing services contract with Clifton Larson Allen. And G is authorize the city clerk to acknowledge or deny excluded gambling applications. H is the Woodland Cove 9th Edition. Resolution number 137, approve the final platte for Woodland Cove 9th Edition and consent to partial assignment of the master development agreement to J&amp;J Minutrista LLC. And H2 is a resolution 138 to approve the preliminary development agreement And, um, H two is a resolution one thirty-eight to approve the preliminary development agreement with J and J Minitrista LLC for Woodland Cove ninth addition. Just kind of a side note, this is basically for, um, pre-approval for grading, basically. And they will be coming back to the planning commission as well as the city council with the site plan. So the site plan has not been approved here this evening. Resolution number I is approve the street side setback variance at thirty-six thirty-five Tuxedo Road. J is approve a conditional use permit for ground mounted solar at eighty-three twenty-five Oxy Oak Circle. And K is accept the improvements and authorize final payment for the twenty-one utility improvement project. And that is it. So we're approving A through K with the exception of D. Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Ms. Mortenson, you had a question on the claims.
I did, and I did talk to Allison and, um, Allison and Ally. You guys changed spots over there. Um, on page eighteen of the pack, um, under, uh, improvements, there was a heated driveway repair at fifty-twenty Minneapolis Avenue and the cost was nine thousand one hundred dollars. And I was just, uh, wondering if you could put an explanation to that because I'm sure it was something the contractor, some contractor did. And the city of Minitrista should not be held responsible for that repair. So you explained it wonderfully. Could you do so for everybody else?
Thank you, Councilmember Mortenson, uh, members of council. So in the, um, the street improvement project last year, there was a heated driveway, uh, where the heating element was cut. And in, in doing that, um, a claim was submitted to the contractor. And it's gone through a process now for a year where it went from, I think the city originally submitted a claim. Um, it's gone through the general contractor for the project and then now it's at their subcontractor. So it's going through the insurance claim process and we don't have a determination yet. And when we look at this, um, at this particular instance, the, due to the slope of the driveway, um, staff felt that it was very important for this to be remedied this, this fall yet. And so in the interest of timing, moving the process on, the, the element, the heating element for it, the, the wiring was ordered so that we would have, it would be on hand, um, so we wouldn't be in a supply chain issue to get this, this resolved. So we're still in the process of, of looking to get this resolved. We had a meeting today, um, about what our next step is in trying to get the contractor to, uh, move through the process and get this work done so that the, the property owner can have the, their driveway done this year.
Thank you, that answered my question.
So, um, any other questions on the claims? Okay, is there a motion to approve claims then?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So we'll move on to our business items. Thank you. Um, first we have our budget process approval. So there's a number of things that we're gonna have to do this evening. Uh, we'd like to approve the preliminary tax levy. And then we're also gonna be approving the debt levy at a hundred percent. We could, and the reason we have to do this is we could actually levy a hundred and five percent, but we have typically only done a hundred percent. And then we also have to approve the date for the public comments, uh, for the twenty-three levy and budget. So with that, um, who wants to take? Ally?
Yes, I will play finance director today. Um, the next few items, as the mayor said, are budget process approvals. The first item is for approving the twenty twenty-three preliminary tax levy. The city council had a full presentation and discussion at the August first meeting regarding setting the preliminary tax levy for twenty twenty-three. The consensus at that time was setting the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget as presented. This budget, um, has a gross levy of five million eight hundred and fifty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And once fiscal, fiscal disparities are calculated, it amounts to a net levy increase of about nine percent from twenty twenty-two. Keep in mind, the prelim budget just sets the maximum the city can levy. The council can always decide to decrease the levy at the final budget approval, but not increase it. Second budget item, the mayor alluded to, um, about the hundred percent of twenty twenty-three bond payments. And the final budget item is approving the meeting date for the public comment and discussion of the twenty twenty-three budget and levy. Staff recommends approving December fifth at seven PM as a public comment date for the final budget approval. And with that, the mayor shall answer any questions.
Okay, is, do you have a slide or anything regarding?
Yeah.
All right, and any discussion or, or comments regarding the?
Well, Brian provided this to show the council the general tax levy increases, um, since twenty twenty, the debt levy, um, and the gross total levy. So you'll see the increased difference and then the total net levy for all of the years. And that's where the nine percent is calculated.
So what, we had new home growth of about what, was it three, three and a half percent? About three and a half percent?
Yeah, right.
So it's about a, a five and a half percent increase if you take that out total, okay? Um, and somewhere in our packet, um, what does this mean for the average homeowner? Do you have that number?
Um, it means a ten dollar per month impact on the median value home.
Okay. And then also just kind of for general information, I know a large portion of the increase was due to our, um, our, uh, salaries in, in, budgeted for, for next year as well, uh, in order to maintain our staff and, and be competitive in the marketplace. So that was one of the big, big things. Any other comments, questions?
I was on the phone with Brian, um, a bit today, uh, to go through things because I wanted to be able to, to be able to say the words back about the tax increase and, and how much it will be and what it have the actual impact is, where it all comes from. And so I don't have any questions.
Okay. John, Pam?
I had, uh, I missed the August meeting when you were doing this, but I had already sent Brian a couple of emails back in early August on this. And then in subsequent, in looking at the YouTube meeting, when you had the discussion, you answered two more of my questions. So I recognize the increase, but I also recognize it's necessary. And the net effect, when you take out the new growth, is not very substantial.
Right. The other thing that, um, I want to point out is our current tax rate is twenty-three point ten percent and our projected tax rate for, for this new budget is, uh, nineteen point one four percent. So that's, that is a good tax rate. Um, the other thing to keep in mind, uh, we can, we can set the, um, levy, the preliminary levy now and we can continue to work on it and we, we can't go up, but we could go down. So, all right. Any other comments or questions? If none, then I'm looking for approval for the twenty twenty-three preliminary tax levy. It's resolution number one forty-two. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And next is approval for the debt levy at a hundred percent for the twenty twenty-three bond payments. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And last but not least, the date for the public comments, which would be December sixth?
Fifth.
Fifth, thank you. At seven PM. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So that concludes our budget, um, except, so now we, um, under second business item, it's a resolution to accept the feasibility report and call the public hearing. I believe that's Mr. Gerbois.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening is the feasibility report for the twenty twenty-three street reconstruction and utility improvement project along with two resolutions, one to receive the report and a second to, um, call the public hearing for the project. So as the council knows, there's a number of projects going on in, in twenty twenty-three in the city of Minitrista. This one is the reconstruction project. We keep referring to it as the Morning View Drive neighborhood, but it, it consists of the following roads. Eastview Avenue, Morning View Drive, Morning View Court, Westwood Avenue and Westwood Drive. The report, um, goes into detail on the existing conditions, proposed improvements, the estimated costs and this project schedule. Um, but really want to highlight here this evening that there were basically two alternatives analyzed. Um, right now, the streets exist as an urban, or a rural section with no curb and gutter. The report looks at adding that curb and gutter, um, installing a storm sewer system to manage the, uh, stormwater that's gonna be created from that curb and gutter. And then also just leaving it as rural, but with a new pavement section, some localized curb and gutter at low points and storm sewer locations. Um, in terms of the project costs, the city was presented of an initial budget back in June. It was around five point two million. And that was just based off of our CIP budgeting numbers. So using the surface area of the existing streets and a budget number of two hundred and forty dollars per square yard. And that was a, definitely a conservative estimate now that we've gone through the site, looked at the, um, topographic information, have very detailed quantities for the project. We've also reviewed, um, what the current market conditions are for, um, potential construction costs. Those line items are detailed in the feasibility report for review as well. But the, um, the estimated project costs for alternative one, which is the urbanized section with concrete curb and gutter is about four point three million. And, um, leaving it as a rural section is about three point nine million. You'll also see in table two, the opinion and probable cost summary, we have, uh, a note there under the table where, um, certain, certain line items associated with the work of the street were actually just moved to the schedule for water main improvements to accurately reflect that those costs are due to the water main. Whereas when we were talking budget numbers, it was, um, flip flop. Those surface improvements were in the, kind of the budget for surface improvements and not attributed to the water main. So, um, that's one big change that you might have noticed when we were reviewing the report. The city went ahead and, and is actually in the process of getting that special benefit consultation completed. We should be expecting that final report shortly. Uh, we were able to receive preliminary, um, unit assessment rates for the benefiting parcels. They're listed here at, um, between ninety-five hundred and ten thousand. There's eighty-one units in the project area that are supposed to be assessed. Two of the, two of the parcels are non-residential and those benefit ranges, ranges were slightly higher listed here in your memo and in the report as well. Um, in terms of total funding from special assessments, we're looking at, um, a minimum of about eight hundred and nine thousand and a maximum of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred. Uh, the balance of the project would be paid for by the various city funds. So in terms of the schedule, we're here tonight, um, council will receive the report. We'll get that special benefit analysis completed by, uh, a consultant in mid-September. After this meeting, if the resolution for calling for the public hearing is passed, we'll get invitations out to, uh, the neighborhood, the residents for the October third, um, neighborhood meeting and public hearing, which is where we would consider authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications moving forward into final design for the project. Uh, open bids in, in the beginning of twenty twenty-three, we'll have one more hearing for the residents, the assessment hearing at that time, um, where we have the bids open, we know the final budget costs. The assessments, remember, um, will have already been kind of stated either tonight or, or actually at that October third public hearing. Um, so there won't be any new information, but that's when we're proposing to certify the assessments there in March. And then we'll start construction shortly after school is done in June. And it'll take all, um, all of twenty twenty-three to complete the construction, um, with final completion in November. And like I mentioned, you have two resolutions, one receiving the feasibility report and the other calling the public hearing. I'll be happy to take any questions the council may have.
First, so first, if the council has specific questions of Adam, then go ahead. And then what I'm gonna do, I know, um, a lady might have, some people might be here to have some questions or comments regarding this agenda item. So any questions? We can ask Adam later too, but I thought if we have.
Well, okay, I mean, out of respect for Mr. Notch, do you accept any of the corrections that he is pointing out?
Um, thank you, Councilmember McGregor. So I think the first comment was on the geotechnical report. He was looking at the boring logs, I believe. I'm not sure which one, but he referred to where the water table was. Um, we, he was correct in stating that there wasn't a water table. So the borings go down to about fourteen and a half feet. I believe we encountered water in only one of them. I'm not certain, I don't have, I'm not gonna flip through them right now. But that doesn't necessarily indicate, um, you know, the presence of water doesn't indicate that the soils are corrosive to the pipe. It's the soils that indicate that. Um, so there are other testing and the geotechnical report, which is one of the appendices, goes into that corrosivity testing. There's a value that's applied to the soil. And the lower that value is, it tells us as engineers, as we're reviewing the report, the more corrosive the soils are to metal pipe. And so those values were consistent with, um, the report done by AE two S, which they used a soils map of just kind of known soils in the area. They didn't take any borings, but they looked at what the soils were. And using those classifications came to the same conclusion. We just took soil borings, which of course, um, AE two S would have done that. Any engineering firm needed to confirm that you can't just look at the map. So I think that those, those findings were, were both, um, on par with each other. And so that was the first comment. The second one was in regards to the AE two S memo, I believe, and, uh, of, of cost figure put in there. Um, I think it might have been, you know, I, I can't speak to what that cost figure was in, in their memo. I think it was maybe full depth reclamation. I don't know if the mayor or someone else knows what that cost figure was.
Okay, let me just, let me just, Mr. Notch's, uh, observations and suggested edits, does it change the outcome of the feasibility report?
So the first comment doesn't appear to be a suggested edit. It was just an observation on soil boring.
Okay.
So that wouldn't change the feasibility report. And any budget numbers listed in, um, AE two S memo aren't, are, I would say, trumped essentially by the opinion of probable cost stated in the feasibility report. That's the, that's the opinion of probable cost for the project. So if an appendix said some budget number, then I'm not certain what that is right now. Um, I don't think that that, that also does not change the outcome of the feasibility report.
And Adam, this will go out to bid, so ultimately whatever that cost, the, the low bidder is, is going to be that cost. So we can guess and we can use current numbers as best we can. This is just to give us an idea as to potential costs, I think.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as some of the councils are aware from previous projects, we put our engineers estimate together. At this stage, we call it an opinion of probable cost. Um, really, when we bid it, we might get lower, we might get higher. And here in the city, we've added a little bit of both, which I would be as close as we can.
As far as, um, publishing this, I'm sure this is something that's on our website and, I mean, one, it's.
After.
Yeah, right. So it can be, um, it, it'll be public information. Anytime the council gets information, it's public information. And if, if it's not a big problem, we can actually just put it up, um.
Typically, they're typically too big to put them out.
Yeah, they take forever to load.
Yeah, right.
For both me and for the viewers. That's why we use that share link to make it easier on everybody. But once it's approved, I then put it to the project page.
Yeah.
And hard copy available at City Hall for anyone to come view as well.
Right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I don't know if this is the right time. When this goes out to bid, is it gonna be bid as a water project and a road project or all together? Or like the Minneapolis Avenue and, um, you know, that, that project, we had to rebid it because it was too big. How is this gonna go out?
Yeah, thank you.
Separate. Separate, remember? I know, good point, a good point.
Yeah, I know, that is a great, great memory. Um, so that twenty twenty-one project was a utility and a street project. Um, however, the utility was very specialized. It was a lift station, um, as well as three separate directional drill force mains. So that was a pretty unique scope. And so we bid that together, it didn't quite work, we separated it and the cost came down significantly. The scope of this neighborhood reconstruction project is very typical for a full reconstruction project where you're incorporating utility improvements and a new street section. And so it's very, very typical to actually bid this project as one. And so that is the recommendation. Yeah, that's the recommendation. I suppose, I was trying to think of a way you could bid it separately and I don't even wanna try to figure that out. But we would plan to bid it, um, and if, you know, with how early the bid opening date is, if there were any concerns or issues, you know, we could evaluate that and look at options.
Okay.
If need be.
But, uh, good point.
It's a good question.
Yeah, good question. Okay, with that, um, did you have a question or comment?
I do.
Just come to the podium, just state your name and address again. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christine Divink and I live at five three three five Eastfield Avenue. A couple of things to keep in mind with this project. The, the project on the table is for full reconstruction with water main replacement. Replacing the water main in over fifty percent of this neighborhood doesn't improve accessibility. It doesn't improve water quality and it does not improve the longevity of the pipes. The pipes we're taking out are expected to last the same amount of time as the pipes going in. And the information that was provided to us at the last neighborhood meeting, um, if you take the two and, and overlap the two, the information that, um, Adam and, um, Gary provided from AE two five shows us that they determine fifty percent of the properties to have low to moderate, uh, corrosivity of, of the soils. More than fifty percent of this project doesn't need water replacement, which would then mean that we could keep our tree coverage and we wouldn't have to deal with six months of limited access and major road, um, upheaval, for lack of a better word. In taking a look at the maps that were provided at the last, after our last city meeting, the property that I live on is slated for four major trees to be removed. And I understand some of you on our council, like your trees in your neighborhood, we do too. Um, I measured one of the trees in my front yard. It is seventeen feet in circumference, seventeen feet around. And because, just because of the water main project, Adam has told me that that tree needs to, to go along with four others on another side of my property. So my question to you tonight is why wasn't one of the? So my question to you tonight is, why wasn't one of the options considered to replace the hot soil affected areas and to connect the new, those new pipes in the hot soil area to the remainder of the water main that doesn't have the soil issues?
We could maybe ask Adam to maybe address that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And that's a, that's a great question. The, a few of the components to the water main replacement are, we've got one cohesive neighborhood. It's this neighborhood that we're looking at. And we know that there's issues with the water main in a majority of the areas. The soils map that she's referring to that shows some of the areas maybe less corrosive soil than others is the soils map. And so when you look at the soil borings, it goes into more detailed points on all the streets. So though the range of corrosive, there's a range of corrosivity, they're all relatively low. So we're concerned about the soils in the whole neighborhood, the ductile iron pipe, as we are in the rest of the city. Our new developments are all getting PVC pipe. We're in, we're limiting the use of ductile pipe where we can. And a lot of other communities who have place soils, who have corrosive soils are doing the exact same thing. So when we look at reconstructing a neighborhood, one big thing that the Director of Public Works and the city engineer and city staff in general have to do is program then ongoing maintenance as part of the capital improvement program. So there is a benefit to having the water main system in a certain neighborhood be of the same vintage. If you just were to replace half of it, now you've got a new road with some older pipe and some newer pipe. And I think that the resident may have said that the new pipe, I know, in the last fifty years. I think A two S's report elaborates on the lifespan of PVC and it hasn't been around to the extent where we can be confident and say that it's just fifty years, you know, so industry consensus is it's longer than that. So I think one of the big things is uniformity of the neighborhood infrastructure. It's all the same vintage. If we left some of it in place and then the road started blowing up or breaks for it in the older water main, you know, the question would be, well, how come we didn't replace it when we had a crew there? So now the costs increase for the city and they're managing a new road with older utilities and a new road with new utilities going forward.
So Adam, can you even connect the two different types of pipes?
Yeah, you certainly can. You know, the hydrant leads, there's a smaller six inch diameter pipe that comes off the main line. That's still ductile in the city, but we wrap that with a, I know that the A two S engineer mentions at the neighborhood meeting, but the ductile, the new ductile iron pipe is coated and then we'll wrap that in a polyethylene encasement. So the hot soils are, the effect of the hot soils is reduced on those pipes. So you can connect the two pipes. So it could be done.
And then, do you work with individual residents such as this lady was saying, can you save her trees?
Yeah, so I recall our conversation, it kept getting harder to hear as I listened more because obviously we just threw axes on where there's trees that we surveyed near the water service and we were certain to write, you know, probable tree removal. But as part of the final design, you know, will certainly be available to meet at any time. Our contact information is out there for any resident who wants to meet. And we can get a much greater picture by meeting in the field on what's going to be impacted. We'd like to say, you know, where your curb stop is, the shut off valve in your yard, minimum of eight feet around that curb stop is going to be excavated. So if we have root systems or trees within that area, it's likely that the trees need to be removed.
Well, let's see if we can work around.
Yeah, of course. Nobody's in the business of cutting down trees.
Because it costs money to cut down the trees and they are a nice amenity to the neighborhood. So maybe you can meet on site with this lady so that she can sleep better at night. So, okay. So we did, any other questions or comments? All right. We did have a discussion about this at our work session and we asked a lot of questions and so on. Allison, do you want to give us a quick recap of kind of what we, what the conclusion was and?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. So at the work session, there was a discussion about urban versus rural roadways. And there was talk about what lifespan will we look at? What's, what's the benefit of doing drainage? Drainage improvements on the urban section and what are the challenges that we see with some of the rural section? And so the, the discussion led to the council looking at an urban section for this roadway improvement project. We also talked about the assessment ranges as well, given the preliminary assessment ranges provided by Patchen Messner, which were ninety five hundred to ten thousand. And at that point, the council's direction was to look at that ten thousand dollar per unit assessment mark. And then for the residential units and then for the two non-residential properties, looking at the high end of the benefit range for Gillespie Park, which is twenty thousand. And for Westwood Church, looking on the lower end of that assessment range, which was twenty three thousand dollars.
I have one question regarding that, and maybe Ron, you can answer. So since the Gillespie Park is city owned and we have to pay that assessment, does that come out of park dedication funds?
Madam Mayor, Council, it, it could. I guess I haven't contemplated that, that matter, but I, I would certainly talk to Brian Grimm about that. And we have a little bit of time before the assessment here.
Right, okay. If you could find out, that'd be great because then we'll go with the higher amount. Anyhow, sorry, go ahead.
That was all I had noted. We were going to take a look at potential funding, funding options for the water main replacement through the P F A program.
Right. The only comment I would have is since this is kind of the preliminary assessments, would it be, I'm assuming it won't come in higher. So when do we establish, I don't know that there's an appetite to go higher. I don't want to say this is exact what we're going to do, but if it comes, if the final numbers come in lower, can we change it? In other words, we can't go higher with the assessments, but we can go lower. Is that correct?
Well, Madam Mayor, Council, you're still very early in the process. I mean, all you're doing tonight potentially is approving the feasibility report and calling for the improvement hearing. At the improvement hearing, the statute says that there has to be a reasonable estimate of the assessments. You don't even have to establish the dollar amount. That gets established at the assessment hearing. So it's, it's after the notice of the assessment hearing goes out sometime in the spring that you can't deviate from that. So I guess the answer is to your question is, there could be numbers bouncing around up or down between now and then.
Okay, because I think one of the biggest issues for the residents in the Morning View area was the cost and the assessment. And so it would be nice to be able to give them, you know, some kind of a closer range. So we've kind of zeroed in on somewhere around ten thousand is, would that be, I mean, is that okay to say at this point then?
Well, I think you could say that again. The statute says that the improvement hearing, which will be, I guess, four weeks from tonight, there has to be a reasonable estimate. So I, I would recommend that at that point, you'd be pretty confident about what the number is going to be.
All right. Okay. Adam, anything else? And Allison?
That was all I had, Madam.
Okay. So yeah, we discussed the urban section versus rural and what the, what the curbing will do and how that is of benefit for water directing, particularly in this area. Now, the North Arm one, of course, will be doing the rural section. Any other comments? All right. So what did you want from us this evening then? Accept the feasibility report. Thank you. So is there a motion then to accept resolution number one forty four and one forty five, which is accepting the feasibility report and calling the public hearing? This is for city project number twenty three dash oh one for the Morning View, Eastview, Westwood Street and Utility Reconstruction.
Madam Mayor, and the motion indicating the alternative.
You said it, but.
Oh, okay. So.
Alternative one and two.
Alternative, with the alternative one.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. Any further question, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So now we'll move on to the accepting the feasibility report for the North Arm and Trails and Reclamation Project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Chris Funders with W S B as well. Adam, pretty much, it's hard to follow, but here we go. Again, presenting the acceptance of the feasibility report for the twenty three street improvement project, the North Arm project. This is the reclamation project that we will be doing this next summer, city number oh two twenty three. It includes North Arm, Trails and Road, Trails and Circle, and also a middle overlay portion on Timber Trail in the Colsec. Again, in June of this year, the C I P budget number was brought up for this project at one three oh three million. Right now, as you can see in table number three, we have a opinion of probable cost at just under one point three one two nine million. So after looking at the total there and assessing kind of the overall improvements of the stormwater, we think that this is a very, very doable project with a very, various acceptable estimate at this time. I would say that we also are going through Patchen Messner for the special assessment for the project. As you can see in the feasibility, they have established a ninety five hundred to eleven thousand dollar maximum for the residential units. We also have three non-residential units for Borough Oaks Golf Course. That range is between forty three and fifty three thousand, obviously being a little larger and non-residential. That's where we get that a little larger range. The total assessment is between four thousand, four hundred and fifty one thousand five hundred and five hundred and twenty six thousand for the special assessment. And the city funds would be covering the rest of it. Very similar to Adam's, we are here to accept the feasibility report and call for the public hearing tonight. The second neighborhood meeting and the public hearing would be on October third. And we have called for the approval of the plans and specs in early twenty three. Looking to open bids at the end of January and accept the, accept the bids and go to a public hearing at the beginning of February, February sixth. There will also be an additional assessment hearing at the time in March to finalize assessments for the project and begin construction as soon as possible as we can in May. If there's any questions.
And again, we talked about the assessments. They'll probably be very similar to the ones for Morning View, right around that ten thousand dollar range.
Absolutely.
Allison, anything else?
Madam Mayor, we did talk about an S, what, what the council's comfort level was for putting a preliminary assessment number for Borough Oaks Golf Club. My, my notes were forty five thousand dollars and that's for, in its entirety, so over the three properties. And so when we look at those, one of the questions that came up is how do you, how do you divide it out amongst the three? And since the, the frontage of each property is a little, it, it's not really representative of the area. The largest parcel has the smallest frontage. So we can have a discussion with amongst ourselves and Patchen Messner as far as when an assessment methodology would be. However, since it's all three owned by the same, we don't anticipate there being much of an issue with a proposed assessment methodology on that.
Right, okay. Any comments, questions? All right. It's a little more straightforward. It's a reclamation project. We have no water or sewer in that area. So thank goodness. So with that, is there then a motion to accept the feasibility report and call the public hearing for project, city project twenty twenty three dash oh two, which includes North Arm and Trails and Reclamation in O'Leary? Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And thank you. Thank you, Chris and Adam, for your presentations. And it's hard to follow him, I know, you know, it's just really hard. All right. With that, that concludes our business items. We'll move on to staff reports. Gary, I know you did our water update at our work session. Things are moving along. Crossing our fingers that they'll continue that way. So great. Any other?
I will lead a liaison for September twenty sixth planning commission.
Okay. Is there a volunteer? Anybody? Volunteer. Thank you. But we'll, we'll hold off on that one. Can you do it? Okay, thank you. Ann. All right. With that, anything, nothing else? So we have staff report, our council reports. I'll start with Kathleen. Anything?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Nothing?
Attended the neighborhood meeting on the sixteenth of August. Pioneer Sarah Creek on the eighteenth. Brian gave his presentation to the committee commission that he gave here with one additional slide, which when we have it in our work session, I can present it. But the caveat is that the potential exists that you can't do just aluminum sulfate. That there's a potential that, that could affect the pH value. And obviously, if it changes the pH significantly, it can kill the fish. His opinion is it won't be an issue, but someone from the supply, their vendor said that they needed to consider. So how do they get around that or how do they address that? Just shortly before they would do the application, they do a jar test. Jar test is taking the water in a scientific method, placing it in jars and then applying the chemicals to see what effect it has. So they won't know that until just before. The net effect to us or to the whole picture is it raises the cost substantially.
Just for a few jars.
In that sodium illuminate, which is the other chemical, is much more expensive than just aluminum sulfate. The net effect to us as it was projected, and again, it's only projected, we talked about sixteen thousand. We could go to twenty three thousand. That's.
If, if they can't do the alum.
If they have to mix it with, and then, then the whole issue is also how much aluminum or sodium illuminate do you use? So I mean, it's a moving picture. Bottom line is, he has filed for the grants. That cutoff was August twenty second, I believe. So it'll be a while before we know how that went.
I'm surprised because Lake Rebecca, they did an alum treatment and I didn't hear that they had to do this jar treatment.
And they also did one on Fish Lake.
Yeah.
Which Brian was relying on.
And they didn't use it there. Yeah.
So he didn't think that it would be an issue, but it is a possibility.
Okay.
To be considered. And I also will be attending the next meeting, which is this Thursday.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you, John. Ann?
Personnel committee, I reviewed and approved the conditional offer letter for the new police officer. Is that?
Yep. Yeah. Hopefully, hopefully we'll have that on the agenda for our next meeting. So Personnel Committee meeting, neighborhood meetings and just general meetings. So that was it for me. So with that, and then the Northwest League, I'll be attending that next week too. So that'll be our first one in a couple of months. So that's it. With that, we can be adjourned if there's a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Ann. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh and we are adjourned.